Mr. President, Mr. Chair, City Councilmember, good afternoon. My name is Bibi Adori, Aviation General Manager, and I will introduce the rest of my team in just a few minutes. So I just want to go through the first couple of slides before we get to the organization, and then I'll give him an opportunity to introduce himself. So our vision is a very simple one, is to be a global leader in airport efficiency. And of course, we deal with customer 100 million, and so we want to provide exceptional customer experience to each one of them. And we create this mission of a team of one because there are so many of us, 63,000 of us at the airport. We have to act as one team, and that's just employee. We have to act as one team, and our mission is to connect our communities to the globe. And I will tell you, this morning was a perfect representation of our mission in that Ethiopian airline Flight 518 arrived at 9:00 a.m. We had Atlanta delegation led by Mayor Dickens, and it was a phenomenal experience. That flight, because of the importance we put in it, also brought along the Chairman of the Board of Ethiopian Airlines, along with Ethiopian Airlines CEO, and a number of dignitaries this morning. So it was a phenomenal success. The flight has departed and is on his way to Addis Ababa in Ethiopia. So very representative of our overall mission. And by the way, that one flight has a significant economic impact, roughly, we estimate at around $70 million. That's not inclusive of cargo, so very big economic impact for our region. Our strategy is based on three pillars, that of people, of course, we have a purpose. Airport have a purpose, as outlined in our mission, is connecting our communities to the world. And then performance, we always want to know if we're winning the game. So we have a lot of measurements in place, measuring our performance, everything from our sustainability to our financial stewardship. Just want to talk a little bit about our airport. This is the footprint of the airport. When I was the General Manager at Intercontinental, that airport with three runways sits on 10,000 acres. This airport with five runways sitting on 4,700 acres, very, very small footprint. This airport is built for speed, is built for efficiency. We have total approximately $10 billion worth of assets sitting on this small footprint. And you will see my budget, that budget is to support this $10 billion worth of asset, provide a level of customer service that is second to none in the industry, and finally to exceed all federal obligations that we govern under day in and day out 24/7. So, Mr. Chair, last year I redesigned, some folks call it an organization change, I call it an organization redesign, to help us to manage each of the six disciplines, well, those five disciplines. This year I added a sixth discipline, and so I will go, the sixth discipline Deputy General Manager, Chief Technology Officer, because of what's happening and the evolution of technology and our dependence on technology and cybersecurity threat and so on and so forth, we decided to move with a sixth discipline technology. I had an extensive conversation with the city CIO, come to agreement with the Chief Operating Officer and Deputy Chief Operating Officer in the creation of the sixth arm of Aviation Division. So I have five of the arms with me here, and so starting with my right, I will start with the Chief Commercial Officer. I have to introduce herself, tell you a little bit about what she does.
Thank you, Mr. Adori. Hello, everyone. My name is Jai Pharoah, and I oversee the commercial portfolio at the airport. We arrive at $1.5 billion in gross revenues, and I get an opportunity to curate the passenger experience from the time they leave their home to the time they leave that jet bridge to get on the aircraft.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Janlin, and I'm the Deputy General Manager of Operations. So what I do is oversee all of the operations that happens at the airport as relates to public safety and security, emergency management, facilities maintenance, and business services. So therefore, we are the group that manages, you know, everything that happens on the runways, everything happens at the checkpoint, that is us. Thank you so very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Benefield. I'm the Deputy General Manager and Chief Financial Officer at the airport. I currently oversee all the accounting and finance functions, and for the time being, technology until we have a new Deputy General Manager.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Smith, Deputy General Manager Senior for Administration. I handle Government Affairs, Business Diversity, Sustainability, GIS, and assortment of other activities.
Good afternoon. Frank Rucker, Infrastructure.
I am in charge of basically all the, what we call a $12.5 billion program that helps to maintain and grow the airport.
And so, a lot of my peers in the industry are asking me, why did I create this madness? Because they want to, I used to work plagiarize, but my team told me to stop using plagiarism and said, copy, they want to copy our organization structure. So I said, it's a simple notion that popped up into my head as I discussed with my leadership team. Number one is, what is the most important thing for our employee? And that is for them to get paid every two weeks. They deserve it because they perform an eight hours' work or 10 hours' worth of work for a decent paycheck. So Michael Smith is responsible for all the administrative stuff, most important to make sure that our employee get paid, right? And somebody got to make the money because the rule said aviation, the government said you must make your own money to spend your own money. We are not taxpayer-dependent, local or state taxpayer-dependent. We do receive some federal grant, so somebody have to make the money for us, right? So Jai Pharoah is responsible for a portfolio of over $1.5 billion annually, and somebody have to take care of their money, make sure it gets into the bank, make sure all bills are paid, that's where the CFO comes in. So that, you could see the madness of what I did in the creation of this organization. And then I have the two favorite kids who come to daddy and mom and said, I need more, I need more, I need more. The operations folks, all the runway is going to be painted, the grass is going to be cut, and Frank Rucker got to bill for the future, not only take care of the existing $10 billion worth of asset we have, but also look at our future needs and bill for capacity and customer service. So with all of that said, a $10 billion asset, 4,700 acres that we worked on and have federal obligations and have to move 100 million passengers a year through our system, along with meters and greeters and cars and two-train system and stuff, we have a very small organization, complement of folks here, FD, 898 folks. Currently, last week when I presented that transportation, my quarterly presentation, we were at 225, we're down to 199. Our AHR Director back here, April Broderas, is doing a Herculean job in filling some of these vacancies. And of these 199 vacancies, 57% of these vacancies are less than six months old. And so we are working hard because over the last 12 to 20 months, we have a lot of turmoil in the industry, shifting of people, jumping from one job to the other, the Great Resignation, now known as the Great Resignation Regrets. And we are starting to see stability in the industry, aviation, I'm referring to aviation industry. Just last month, we went out and we did a hiring event, and all the vendors who were out there made 350 on-the-spot job offers to applicants. Before, just 24 months ago, we were lucky if we have that many people show up at one of our jobs, or they call it career fair. So before we get into the big budget details, I want to bring it home, and as a military officer, this is called bottom line, upfront first bluff, right? So I want to bring it home to us. As I said earlier, the law said that, you know, airports, you must make your own money to spend money on your operations and airport development. So the mayor, the city of Atlanta can't come to me and said, we need $100 million from airport revenue, but we will pay for support that the city renders to the airport. We are forecasting a budget in fiscal year 24, total budget. This is the first fiscal year we're talking that we're clear and free of COVID and COVID grant money and stuff like that. This is actual revenue that we anticipated to make, $696 million, of which, and I was very liberal because we have a lot of activities going on, and we are ramping up now to full operations. And when my team presented their budget to me, lots of tough questions, but I wanted to support to make sure we fulfill all our federal obligations. So we have earmarked $403 million for operational expenses, that's inclusive of fire and police that serve the airport. We also have some debt, right, a couple of billion dollars outstanding debt, and so our debt payment, annual payment, is $122 million. So all of that taken into consideration, we expect at the end of the fiscal year to roll over $169 million into our renewal and extension fund to use for future development of the airport. So one of our strategic talks about performance and financial stewardship, this is about all of that, for us to do what we need to do to fulfill all our federal regulatory obligations and to maintain our asset in the best of condition to support the 100 million passenger that we will move through, 100 million that will move through our system in just this calendar year. So now we'll go into the budget detail, how we arrive at those number, and I will hand this over to my CFO.
All right, thank you. Before we get started into the key metrics, I'm just going to kind of cover some general approaches to how we look at our budget and finances overall. As B had mentioned, we have three strategic pillars. The financial health aspect of the airport is a critical aspect of our performance strategic pillar. As part of the financial management and stewardship of the airport, we take a big-picture view and focus on several key areas in this budget presentation, which you'll see today. We focus on all aviation operating revenues, all expenses paid from aviation operating fund, which include expenses not only from the aviation department, but from the fire department, police department, and the other key support departments providing services to the airport. And that includes executive offices, AIM, law, finance, procurement, human resources, ethics, audit, OIG, and other indirect charges to the airport. We'll also look at the general airport revenue bond debt service in a little bit more detail that B had talked about, and we'll look at our key financial metrics. Of the key financial metrics, there's really three that we focus on very heavily. The first one is debt service coverage, and that just measures our ability to pay our debt on an annual basis. Cost per in-plane passenger, which measures the cost to the airlines to operate at our airport on an in-plane passenger basis. And then B had talked about the net reserve, we also call it RNE rollover or equity transfer, it's got a number of names, but that's the amount of money we roll over to the renewal and extension fund on an annual basis. These metrics combined are really good indicators that show the financial health of the airport overall. They're not only used by us internally, but by external stakeholders as well, including investors, rating agencies, and many other groups as we go out to borrow money in the bond market and other areas. So they keep us focused on the big picture. Our general approach to forecasting, we review and develop projections and forecasts based on trends and data. Everything we do is based on trends and data. Now, that's been a little bit more challenging during COVID because trends have been all over the place through COVID, starting to get a little bit more straightforward, but still remain a bit of a challenge. But the team, my team's done a great job on getting us good forecasts this year. The other thing we do on a regular basis is monitor our budget actual on a monthly basis, and every one of our divisions within the Department of Aviation come in front of this executive team on a quarterly basis, and we review those budgets, ask questions, ensure how they're doing within their budgets, and also gives us an opportunity to react if things are not going the way we want to during that timeframe. As we project revenues, our revenue projections are generally moderately conservative. We do not like to over-project on the revenue side because that can get us in a little bit of trouble. And then on the expense side, we do have a fully loaded budget here, 100% of positions are loaded, contracts are fully loaded now, we have not cut back on any of the contracts because we feel like we're beyond COVID, as B had talked about. This does include some on-call contract services, we talk about that, which gives us a little bit of flexibility if we need to go do airfield markings or other things on the fly throughout the year. And as we've found over the last three years, we do have the ability to reduce costs or control costs where necessary, and we've done that through COVID for the last three years, so we can have that look. Councilmember One, you talked about our budget book on page 265. We do on Slide 11, as we do every year, include what we call our bridge document that shows not only the aviation expenses on the page you can find that on, but also the expenses for each of the other departments that I just mentioned and what pages those are on, because the next slide that we're going to look at shows the comprehensive view, but this gives you the bridge to the individual pages, so you can use that as a reference item. And B talked about this already, so I'm just going to make this point, this is what I would consider our first post-COVID budget, fully loaded revenue, fully loaded expenses, passenger traffic anticipated or projected to be above the fiscal year 19. We've been waiting four years for that, so, and we'll see that on the next slide. Oh, no, we haven't even gone through metrics yet. So anyways, I'm going to jump into the metrics. So B talked about the fact that we look at a number of metrics throughout the day. This is just the tip of the iceberg of the different things that we look at, so I'm just going to cover a couple of the things. Airport customer satisfaction, so this is a critical, critical metric for us. We look at customer satisfaction from, and Jai talked about it, from the beginning of the journey all the way to the end of the journey. We want to ensure that we're impacting that journey at every step of the way in a positive way. You'll see in this trend that fiscal year 21 was good, we dropped off, but this was a, really a worldwide issue. Everybody received a reduction in customer service impact, and a lot of that was because airports were really coming back out of COVID, really trying to ramp back up. And you probably read and heard a lot of stories for airports like Toronto or Skippel Airport in Amsterdam where baggage were getting lost and those type things. We ran into none of those problems, and one of the reasons we did not run into that is because we had, we were one of the first, if not the first in the country, to have a resumption of operations handbook. So you can see that paid off because for fiscal year 23, we're projecting to be back at 85%, and beyond, we're targeting to get back to the 87-plus percent. As we move to bond coverage, this has been heavily impacted by COVID. Fiscal year 21 was a little bit high because we applied COVID relief grant money to that. I'm sure you're already asking yourself, why NA for '22 and '23? We actually paid 100% of our debt service coverage with COVID relief grants for those two years, and our target is 1.5 debt service coverage, required to have 1.2. As you'll see when we get to the debt coverage slide, we're actually above 2.0 for our proposed budget, but we always target at 1.5. Total passengers handled, I'll just talk about the fiscal year 24 target, that's at 111 million, that's above our pre-COVID number in fiscal year 19, at 110 million. Cargo volumes, interesting too, a little bit opposite of what we saw with the customer service. We had a big uptick during COVID because everybody was at home, everybody was getting things shipped to their house, so that's starting to taper off now and come back to kind of a more normal approach. And then the last two components are really, you know, our non-aeronautical revenue, again, Jai is responsible for bringing those dollars in. Parking was strong in fiscal year '22, it's going to be strong again in fiscal year '23 and '24, so we're looking forward to that. And then the airport commercial revenue includes all other concessions, or all other commercial revenue including concessions, which will go to the next one. I already kind of talked about this a little bit because I was trying to jump ahead. So this is really just an in-plane passenger projection list that shows fiscal year 19, which was at 54.5 million in plane passengers versus our proposed or projected fiscal year '24 in plane passengers that this budget revenue was based on, and as you can see, every month is trending or is proposed to be above where we were at in fiscal 19. So this is a very good thing, we're happy to see this. Again, four years in the waiting for that. All right, now to the details. So B used his bottom line upfront, hopefully you guys can read this one, it is a lot of detail on here, but we do like to show you more of the components of both the revenue and the expenses, but I'll focus on the $696 million in the fiscal year '24 proposed budget column. We split our revenues really from a focused perspective into two different segments, aeronautical revenues and non-aeronautical revenues. Aeronautical revenues are the rents we charge to the airlines through terminal rents, landing fees, and other airside rentals, and then non-aeronautical revenues are everything else, the parking, the concessions, ground transportation, car rental, and so forth. So I'm just going to point out some of the highlights and increases. Both landing fees and terminal rents, we reduced those rents in partnership with airlines, and you'll see that on the concession side too, through COVID. So when we say fully loaded in fiscal year '24, we have applied no credit to the revenue, so these are rates and charges based on our airport use and lease agreement, as if, you know, we're moving forward with that. So that's a good thing. And then, you know, the airline concession credit, there's actually two of those. We give a credit at 50% of concessions to the airlines and a per-passenger credit of 40 cents per passenger. Those are really just increased in correlation with the passenger increase and the increase in concessions revenue that you'll see below. And in the non-aeronautical section, really the two big drivers here are your parking increase. Again, we've had strong parking, the parking decks, we see the messages on an hourly basis on our phones, but they're mostly full through the summertime and continue to be strong on the revenue side. Concessions ramping back up, 121 million projected. We did apply, there's a big reduction in fiscal year '23 because we did have the American Rescue Plan grants that reduced that revenue for that period, so this is a fully loaded back to, you know, I would say post-COVID number. So that's the revenue side. On the expense side, $403 million that B was talking about, 140 million of that is in personnel, and 220 million of that is in purchase contract services. That's also where you're going to see the big increases. On the personnel line, our budget this year compared to last year shows a $7.8 million increase. Part of that is actually the fiscal year '23 position. We added about 58 positions in fiscal year '23 that was approved through city council, so that's just incorporated in there. The net add for this year is about 2 million, or 2.5 million, sorry. So we have about $2 million for overtime as we're ramping back up, police, fire, maintenance, all those groups will have some overtime, as well as for the intern program. So those are the big drivers there. And then purchase contract services, we try to keep this budget as flat as possible this year. We did have a big increase as we were coming back out of COVID. There have been a number of, as I'm sure everybody said, inflationary factors have had an impact on everybody's budget. We saw a lot of that last year, we're trying to maintain as flat as possible this year at 6.2, that's about 3%, or actually less than 3%. So we're trying to keep tight there. So I think those are the major highlights I want to talk about on this slide, so we're going to go ahead and move to the next one. A lot of information here, I won't spend a lot of time, but I like to give this to you for reference, but debt service coverage is, again, one of our key metrics, and really all debt service coverage is, again, is our, measures our ability to pay our debt. So we take our revenue, subtract our expenses to get down to a net revenue number, and then we divide that by the debt service to get to a debt service coverage number of 2.39. That's what our proposed debt service coverage is for fiscal year '24. Again, not applicable for '22 and '23 because we paid 100% of debt service coverage with COVID relief grants, and 2.39 is probably a little bit higher than what I expected, but, you know, again, our target's 1.5, and we've been between the 1.7 to 2.10 range over the, probably the previous five years excluding the COVID years. And lastly, I won't spend a lot of time here, this is mostly just, again, for your reference, but this shows our bridge to the city of Atlanta budget book. The top section just shows the Department of Aviation, if you looked at the 1-8 department, 315 million of expenses. We show the other city departments that we talked about earlier at 27 million, fire and police combined at 60 million, and that gets you back to the full view picture of 403 million. And then we just give a more detailed breakout of all the other departments compared fiscal year '23 to '24 of the 27 million. So that is the bridge to operational breakout, and that brings us to questions.
All right. That was a lot of information in the last seven minutes. But I'll go ahead and start taking a line of council members for questions. Councilmember Hillis, you're up first.
Thank you, Chairman One. Thank you all for your presentation. One question on your budget under the supplies. There's about a $1.2 million decrease, and it references an increase impacting utility costs. But if that's increasing, then how is the budget mine item for that going down? And I know this budget book was printed well before this event, but Georgia Power just, or the Public Service Commission just voted for a pretty large increase.
Are you looking at the budget, the budget book, page 265? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, 2, I was on 267, but.
Gotcha. I would have to go back and look at that page specifically for aviation, but the number that's on the slide deck, and let's just back up to that page here, again, is utilities for the entire airport wide, not just the Department of Aviation, so there is a little bit of additional expense there. And I'll take a look at that page and get you a little bit more detailed answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
I always appreciate the way the airport formats the information you give us. It's a lot of extra detail, I think we can, and it's always very straightforward. You've always had strong finance people running the show. I'm not on transportation, so this is kind of a catch-up question for me. What do you foresee eventually happening to the twin curiosities known as Dawson and
Over the years, there have been many discussions about a second airport in this region. Right now, based on our future forecast, this airport is sitting in a good position through the year 2035. And so as we look and we evaluate the need for additional aviation growth in the region, that's going to be probably half a decade to a decade worth of discussion. But for the time being, the properties at Dawson and Paulding will remain under aviation control, and that property is being rented out for other activities to different agencies. So we do make some revenue out of those properties so we could offset the property tax or some of the expenses that those properties are costing us.
There used to be a little timbering that went on, I'm not aware of too many. What else is going on out there?
We have trail, hi, it's Jai. We have trail fees, and we also do drone testing in partnership with Georgia Tech. So they do a lot of testing out there, and then we also are looking at other ways to be able to improve what that experience could be on the trails. So we've done some additional improvements to the bridges and some of the walkways. So right now, the main proponent is the trails and also the Georgia Tech testing they're doing for drones.
And then why, what's the magic in the 2035 date? You said we're in
Say it one more time.
B said you were in great shape until 2035, and I just wondered what happens in 20 2020.
So that's with the current existing facility we have. So if we have to grow this airport, we look at, and right now, I have commissioned Frank to move forward with a new master plan, to refresh the existing master plan we have to determine what the need in 2035 through 2045 will look like, and then we could make some strategic decision if we're going to grow the airport, and if we do grow the airport, it will be, the airport will grow towards the east. And so we have a plan to grow the airport east, expansion to the east, another concourse, a train expansion, and all the support facility that goes with that. But for us to do that, we'll have to relocate a number of other support facility that are in existing areas, the footprint that we will need to expand the airport to the east.
Is a new airport realistic? I mean, it's been talked about forever, but I haven't run into too many people who take it all that seriously.
Frank, you want to add to that?
I'm not one for the planning aspects of it, but from discussions I've had with Delta Airlines, as we're talking about the capital program, you know, it seems to be more realistic as the General Manager spoke about to expand the existing facility. Thus, towards the international side, you still got room to go east along Manay Jackson International Boulevard, and we're actually doing a lot of development on the south side, so we're trying to gauge is there going to be a sixth runway, or we're going to take all that property on the south side and develop that toward.
And if I may add something, if you look, if you look in the United States, we have about 500 commercial airport, and there is not a single discussion right now about building a new airport or building new airport. Now, building of new airports are taken off and Now, building of new airports or taking off, it's like wildfire in Asia, mostly in the Asia continent, and the African continent is looking at that right now. But what we are looking at, the evolution and the technology that is occurring, is how do we continue to maximize the footprint we have with technology to be able to double the operations that we currently have? So if you look, if we go back just a few years, in, I think it was 2015, '17 area, this airport handled nearly a million flight operations for that calendar year, 997,000 flight operations. Today, we are less than 900,000 flight operation, and we are carrying about 30 million passenger more.
Do you want to talk about upgager? That's fine.
All right. Well, I mean, if we're going to have a discussion about building another airport, I mean, that's a conversation of otherworldly, you know, political dimensions.
And councilmember, at the end of it all, it would boil down to the cost of building a second airport and whether the consumer will be willing to pay for that cost.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's interesting. I'll just, I'll close just by saying what everyone's going to say, which is, we love the airport. There's a lot of airports out there that aren't as nice as the ones, as the one that you run. And I'm always amazed when I see a big project underway, LaGuardia. And maybe I'm fooling myself, but I like to think we prompted that, in a way. Because you have to compete. You have to compete with us. So appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, very quickly, our budget is about people. So just want to make sure somewhere in this budget that we're maintaining and growing the first-in-class, well-compensated, well-trained, and well-equipped Department of Aviation Security and Compliance Team.
Councilmember, you know, I've been talking about that, and not only talking about it, but I am walking the talk with my senior team when it comes to compensation, training. We are leading the industry in some of, like, for example, our, the program that we just started, our apprenticeship program. We're leading the industry in some of these areas. So we are walking the talk.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I just wanted to ask a quick question around the debt coverage. On page... Here we go. No, that's not where I want. On page seven, you've got the chart around the bond coverage factors, the GARBs, going back to FY '21 actual, and then there's sort of these extraordinary couple of years. Now, we're at 1.5 as a target for 2024. What's the right level for that coverage? What's the, is 1.5 long-term where we want to be? Or do we want that coverage to be at a higher ratio, looking more like FY '21? And just put that in perspective.
Yeah, I'll answer that first, and then B probably has some follow-on to that. So 1.5 is definitely the target. And important enough that we actually embedded it into the lease as a kind of a basement level so that if we drop below 1.5, we can clawback concessions revenues that we're sharing with the airlines. So this really kind of is the baseline target where we want to stay at. But we would like to stay above that as well as we can. But that's kind of the general long-term focus, is 1.5 and above.
1.5 and above?
Yeah.
Got it. And, but you anticipate that that probably moves up over time to some degree, given pending economic conditions?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
And Mr. President, so that 1.5 is a self-imposed, it's not mandated on us. The 1.2 is mandated.
Got it. Okay, got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it.
I've got questions on page nine, particularly on the revenue side. I understand the expense going up because we're going to be full throttle. I get that, and there's just minor fluctuations there. But I guess I'm trying to understand some of the wild, I shouldn't say wild, but the significant fluctuations from '24, either back to the FY '23 projection or to the adopted budget. For example, landing fees. So I can reconcile the adopted to propose, but why is projection so much lower than, and why? What is our justification from if that's kind of a, maybe the best jumping off point that we're going up significantly from that?
Yeah, so a very astute question. So with landing fees and terminal rent specifically, those first two lines, so as we develop our, what we call our rates and charges with the airlines, that's actually based on our operating budget. And last year, we were a little bit later in the cycle in getting the revenue. So what happened was, we had loaded the budget as the full budget, but then we applied some COVID relief grants to reduce that rate. That's why the projected number's lower, because it wasn't included in the original budget.
Okay.
But that's a great question.
Okay, so there is a little bit of COVID funding.
Oh, there's a, yes.
Flowing through this. Okay, that's helpful. But then when we get down to the non-aeronautical, the one that jumps out at me is car rental. So the FY '24 proposed, again, if we're going to full throttle, why is that number dipping and even dipping below FY '23 projected?
Because we were super conservative on that particular one. Yeah, this one's kind of been, so car rental has been an anomaly in both directions. So as we were going through COVID, it didn't drop as much as mostly the other revenue items, for one reason, because it was one of the main facilities that remained open. So we were bringing in customers from around. Also, the rates that they were charging to customers had risen. So that rose quite a bit. So we overshot a little bit in fiscal year '23, and so we probably had a little bit more of a near-jerk reaction back the other way in fiscal year '24, because I like to be more conservative than...
All right. I mean, I'd rather be air on that side than the other.
So my directive to them is be liberal in the operating expenses because we need to make sure we follow all regulatory guidelines. Be conservative, more conservative in the revenue so it doesn't get us in trouble.
Right. Appreciate that. Two just comments. Number one, parking. Councilmember Shook, I can't, some dark echo voices in the back of my head keep ringing out of you, me, Councilmember Adrian, worrying about parking and building a new parking deck with the advent of rideshare. And I'm just, it surprises me that this number just keeps rocking and rolling. And I think that's, it's interesting, so I think that...
I love it, actually.
Yeah, I'm sure you do, yeah.
Jai, why don't you, I could, but you go ahead and answer it.
So what we saw was there, I think there was this kind of universal fear that rideshare and transportation companies were going to make parking obsolete because of our actual location of the airport and the fact that we're regional with other people driving in. We still have folks coming in from other states. And with COVID, folks started wanting to be a little bit more conservative about getting inside of a vehicle with someone they did not know. What we also are starting to see is that people are coming with larger vehicles. So we see RVs and other things. So that Park Select option that you see from Sullivan Road is way more full than what it has been before because people are caravanning into Atlanta. Remember, two hours to 80% of the population by air. So it's a really great value prop for people to come into the airport and to drive in.
And that's fascinating. Again, I just remember we were, I was...
Everybody was scared, yeah. I was a little nervous, too.
So people ask us, why is your parking doing so well, right? And you've got to realize, we are not just attracting consumer from just the metro Atlanta or the 13 MSA. We're attracting consumer from seven states. And with Ethiopian flights starting, that is, we're probably going to have even more demand for parking for people coming into Atlanta to get onto these flights for onward destinations.
Well, it's interesting because my partner's in-laws were here, and they live in Louisville, but they drove all the way down here to be able to fly in and out of Atlanta. Now, they didn't park down at the airport, they left their car. But it is interesting, it attests to that point. The other is just more an observation, again, harking back, harkening back to the last time I was on council. I just remember the GM coming in here, and we were shaving numbers to make sure we could get the debt coverage. Like, we were, you know, we're like hundredths of a point in terms of coverage. And now, I mean, you're comfortably aiming for 1.5 or 1.2, and the projections show that you are well over that. So I just, I mean, that, I think, is a testament to your fiscal responsibility and management, exactly what you said, overshoot on expenses, undershoot on revenues, and hopefully, you know, that gives you a ton of cushion. But I just wanted to applaud y'all for that.
So we have installed much more discipline in the last two years into all the things we did, into our federal regulatory requirement, you know, our payment condition report, our financial report, our sustainability report. So like I said, you have to have measurement. And that's why our third strategic pillar is performance. Measurement to understand where you are in that certain time and place so that you could make those necessary adjustments. You don't make adjustments after you, you're derailed. You make adjustments before you get to that point. And this team is, and the rest of the organization, all bought into that culture of knowing what we are doing and be proactive and taking preventive measure before we get derailed. So I'm very happy, and I tell you what, so super excited and so super grateful for the team and bought into that culture.
I mean, it's no surprise you have the bond rating you do. So that, it all plays into that. And that probably, this is the last thing. I'm really looking forward to, I mean, the focus on the customer experience. So I look at you, I appreciate the conversations we've been having in Transportation Committee, you know, the concessions conversation, as well as just the feedback and the improvements that we can make. I think, again, we'll just continue to lift the success of the operations down there.
We're very much looking forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks to have a more in-depth conversation at the airport.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, I see she's about to push the button, but, all right. So with that, thank you very much. This was a very solid presentation. I think we've gotten this, our questions in. Thank you for all that y'all do down there. Colleagues, with that, we conclude this day of budget hearings. We will reconvene tomorrow morning at 9:30 with, remember, again, it's Atlanta Police Department has been rescheduled for then, followed by the Office of the Solicitor and then Municipal Court. And the afternoon sessions are Public Defender, Procurement, and Transportation. So with that, we stand adjourned for the day. Thank you.